Okay, let's go ahead and get started with the September 21st meeting of the Brandon City Council. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Christina, can you call the roll?
Yep. Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen.
Here.
Cole, Parliament.
Here.
Mayor Lumber.
Here. We need to, first of all, have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two sets of minutes to approve from September 3rd and September 8th. Motion to approve is presented.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second to approve the minutes from September 3rd and September 8th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bills and claims are submitted with your agenda in an amount of $1,950,711.61. If I can have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second to approve the bills and claims as submitted with the agenda. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The public comment portion of our agenda, anybody from the public that would like to address the council may do so at this time. Hearing none, we'll continue on with the public hearing on Resolution 25-20, which is a loving special assessment for unpaid nuisance abatements for Linda Lynch, Jeremy Strut, Loefel, Amanda Jaren, David and Wanita. I can't read my own writing. Holman. Thank you. Any of those people present to address their special assessment? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on the part of the council to approve the special assessments to those three individuals. Motion is second to approve Resolution 25-20 as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have a special employee recognition for Andrew Nygaard. Brian? Joel?
Sergeant Palmer.
Sergeant Palmer. Various other police. Officials wanna...
Are we on? All right. For those who don't know me, Sergeant Alex Palmer. I supervise one of the overnight shifts here with the Police Department. Come before you to acknowledge the outstanding efforts of Officer Andrew Nygaard during a medical call on August 22nd of 2020. The summary of that call is Officer Nygaard, along with myself and Officer Francis, responded to a Priority One cardiac arrest for Brandon residents here within the city. Those who don't know what a Priority One cardiac arrest is, or a Priority One call, that is to get there as fast as possible. The report was, the patient is a 41-year-old male, was on the bathroom floor of the residence, unconscious, not alert and not breathing. Officer Nygaard actually responded to the call before being dispatched. The way our calls go normally on a medical call, fire and ambulance or dispatch first, and then depending on the call, the police will be dispatched. Officer Nygaard recognized the priority of the call, responded before he was actually dispatched. Arriving on scene, deployed his AED. The AED did administer one shock. Officer Nygaard then assisted with CPR until being relieved by the paramedics. Due to quick responses and actions taken by Officer Nygaard, the patient was able to be transported to AVARA for further medical care. And due to the efforts of Officer Nygaard, the patient and his wife is actually here today. Louis and his wife, Betsy, wanted to be present for the award. So does my distinct pleasure to Officer Nygaard recognition for a job well done. And if Officer Nygaard would like to say anything, he does have his entire family here, would like to be present to his hopefully soon-to-be bride. I keep pressuring him. And the rest of his family, I'll let him introduce them.
Hi, I'm Officer Nygaard. See, I have my girlfriend here, her name's Lexi, my mom and my grandparents, and then my stepdad on the far side there. You know, it's a great honor to work for this community and the equipment that we are provided with, and the resources that we have. You don't normally get to see what the updates are with the patients or with the people you deal with. Was happy to follow through, and this is actually the first time I've actually seen him since the incident that night, and it's awesome to see that he's still here today. And, you know, I talked to him earlier today before, when I got here, and every time I drive by his house, he's always there with his dog, always waving at me on his deck. And it's something you notice when you drive by, and it's very cool to see that something like that has an impact on him. Like I said, I'm very happy to be working for this department and very happy to work for, serve this community, so.
Thank you so much for your effort.
Thank you.
Betsy, I'd like to, a few words, if she could.
Betsy Aden, 1817 West Thomas Circle. That night is so much more to me than you could ever imagine. Not only did he respond within three minutes, we had the shock administered within three minutes. And the only reason I knew that is because of our alarm system. I have the camera of him running into the house within three minutes of me calling 911. My neighbors started administering CPR within one minute. That difference in time is why I still have my husband here. But it wasn't just everybody that responded, the fire, the police and the paramedics. It was also your equipment, because not only did the AED save his life, it also gave the doctors the information they needed to make a proper assessment of what had happened that evening. So 13 pages came from that AED and was given to his cardiologist and was able to do the proper assessment to know exactly what happened the night that he was, he went down. So thank you very much for the officer and for your guys' equipment and the proper training that he has gotten in that, because it was a matter of having my husband or not. So, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Andrew, it looks like your patient's doing very well. He looks very healthy and good to go. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 7D, we have our 2019 audit report. You presented, Holman Bergman.
Well, my report's not as exciting as what just happened. I think that's kind of an understatement. Pardon me? I was also informed that I kinda, you know, I came here color coordinated, so. So everybody's got a copy of the audit with them or available to look at? This is working right? So on page one, we have the independent auditor's report. Page one and two. This is unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can receive on your financial statements. And this letter basically says that the financial statements that are presented are presented materially correct in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Page three and four, five, and... Is the management discussion and analysis. This is kind of an overview of the financial statements. It's prepared by Christine. And it kind of gives a thumbnail of what happened during the year. Page six has a comparative statements for the governmental activities and the business-type activities. And page seven has graphs of where the income and expenses were, and those funds were paid out of, and the taxes collected for each one of those funds. And on page eight is a comparative statements of revenue and expenses for the governmental and business type, comparing 18 and 19. And the capital asset administration on nine, long-term debt on 10, the revenue bonds on page 11 and 12. And then the contacting the city of Brandon's financial management is the last paragraph. On page 14 is the balance sheets for the city in both the governmental activities and the business-type activities. This particular statement includes, kind of in the middle of the page, the land, construction in progress, and other capital assets net of depreciation, and down in the liabilities are the debt, the amount due in one year and the amount more than one year. So this is kind of a thumbnail of the entire town, the city of Brandon, showing what value of the city is on historical cost basis. Those fixed assets probably have an appreciated value, but in accounting, we depreciate fixed assets and we do not account for any appreciation in land or other types of assets you might have. And this is what they call a GASB 34 statement. And the business-type activity shows the same fixed assets, capital assets and the debt. Page 15 is the statement of activities for the, showing the expenses in the first column, the charges for services, and then your grants and revenues. Over towards the bottom of that page are the other revenues, the revenues from the taxes and miscellaneous revenues and transfers. So it also shows there the net position, the ending net position, which those figures on the very last line are reflected in the last line on page 14. Page 16 and 17 are the balance sheets of the various funds. These do not include the fixed assets or the debt. This particular statement is something you probably receive each month as you have your meetings. But it has the assets, liabilities and fund balances of those various funds. Last, second to the last column, the non-major governmental funds are back on pages 60, 61, 62 and 63. And page 18 is a reconciliation of those two balance sheets. Page 19 and 20 and 21 are the revenues and expenses. And towards the bottom of page 21 shows the net change in fund balances. So you'll see in those different funds either an increase or a decrease in those fund balances. And on page 22 is a reconciliation of those changes in fund balances. Page 23 and 24 are the proprietary fund balance sheets for the water, sewer, golf course and the other non-major enterprise. Shows there the assets, liabilities, and net position of those particular funds. And on page 25 is the revenue and expenses, and towards the bottom you have a change in net position. And you can see whether there, you have an increase or a decrease. All these are increases in fund balances. Page 26, what you've been looking at are accrued financial statements. On page 26 is a cash flow statement. Basically, we start off with the income for each fund, add back items that have no cash equivalents, like depreciation, increase in receivables, decrease in payables and so forth. So towards the, page 27, towards the middle of the page, you'll have a net increase or decrease in cash and cash equivalents. So you can see that there was a, a net decrease in your cash of 825,000. Some of those were for purchase of assets. In those cash flows from financing activities, kind of breaks out those expenses out there. Then the, you have any questions on the balance sheets for those different funds or the income statement? Page 28, we have, start with the notes of the financial statements. We have the summary of significant accounting policies. And they go forward till page 35. And there we have the disclosures of note, of fund balances reported on the balance sheet, those amounts that are non-spendable, restricted or committed. Note two talks about the deposits and investments. Note three are the receivables and payable note. Note four is inventory. Note five is property tax. Note six is changes in capital assets. And there you'll see whether you've got increases or in those various construction work in process. And the bracketed amounts are finished projects that end up in the capital assets of building or improvements and are being depreciated. And then there's the amount of depreciation on the amounts of buildings, improvements in machinery, and some assets were sold. Business-type activities are on 30, page 39. And the list on the bottom of 39 are the projects, the governmental activities and the business-type activities, the work-in process or construction process. Page 40 is a change in long-term debt, where you've added debt or retired debt, beginning on ending balance in the second to the last column, and the amount due within one year. And then 41 gives a brief description of each debt, the fund that's being paid out of, maturity date, rate of interest. And the top of page 42 are the capital acquisitions for the golf course, equipment and the utility tractor. There's also a schedule of the annual requirements for the revenue bonds, the state revolving certificates of participation, no payable capital lease. So the total at the, second segment of that is the amount of payments that are going to be due within the next five years. And then there's five-year increments. Note eight talks about the wastewater agreement. Note nine is the restricted net position. Note 10 is internal transfers, inter-fund transfers. Note 11 is the pension fund. I'm not going to go into great detail, otherwise that'd take about another 45 minutes of your time. But it's good reading up to page 43, 44, 45 and 46. Note 12 is the risk management, and it talks about the different types of insurance you have. Page 49 is the, is your actual budget, your final budget and your actual expenses in the general fund. The first page is the revenue, so you actually collected $364,000 more than what you budgeted. On page 50, down towards the bottom, you were going to decrease your fund balance by 713,000. It actually increased by $8,808. So your fund balance is $722,000 better off than where you thought you were going to be. There's also the budget for the street maintenance fund. And on page 52 is the budget and a budget accounting note, the calendar of events. Page 53 and 54 again talks about the retirement system. And 55 is notes to schedule a proportion of share of net pension liability and schedule pension contributions. And then these are the non-major balance sheets and income statements for the special revenue, the debt service, the capital project. Those are total non-major programs, balance sheet and income statement. Page 58 are special revenue, non-major governmental funds. Third cent sales tax, 2006 TIF, service transportation, Brandon revolving loan fund. Balance sheet and income statement on page 59. And then on 60 is the debt service, non-major governmental, the TIF convention center debt and the TIF Hemlock Boulevard debt. And the income statement on those two are page 61. Capital projects and non-major governmental and core project in the Rushmore area reconstruction project on page 62 and 63. The letter on page 64 is the independent auditor's report on internal control or the financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. So during our course of our audit, we look at the compliance of all your, all your debt. Make sure that you're in compliance with all the rules and regulations of the contracts and grants that you have. And we also look at the internal control to make sure that the transactions are being properly reported, recorded and approved. On page 66, I'm happy to tell you that you have no current audit findings because of the system that we implemented, or you implemented within this last year of doing more oversight on the financial statements. So therefore, we were able to get rid of that lack of segregation of duties. Any comments or questions?
Any questions from the council?
Keep up the good work on those.
You're right. I'd rather listen to my employees saving my residents' lives than listen to you.
Yeah, it's all right.
You were very accurate on that statement. But thank you very much, Christina. Very nice job. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Just need a motion to approve that?
Correct. If I could entertain that motion to approve the audit report, 2019 audit report as presented. Motion is second to approve as the audit report is presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have a report from WSP, Split Rock Creek Aquifer Evaluation Report.
Good evening. My name is John Oswald. I'm with WSP. I worked on this project with Mitch Cannonberg, who was with WSP in our Sioux Falls office and is now with Leonard, or LRE Water is the name of the company now. So the project overview here was, we were looking at sustainability in the Split Rock Creek Aquifer, which required that we start with a conceptual model. Then we constructed a steady-state numerical groundwater model. Kind of led us to see the need for a transient model, and I'll explain all these things as we work our way along. An uncertainty analysis, and then a final determination on long-term sustainability. So look first here is a conceptual model of the Split Rock Creek Aquifer. So as you can see, basically, the Split Rock Creek Aquifer is sand derived from the Sioux Court site that fills in the Brandon embayment, which is a buried valley within the Sioux Court site. That's then covered with shales and clays, and then there's another superficial aquifer generally, and then till over the uplands. And water generally recharges through the till or thinner areas where maybe there's some more sand and gravel areas. And it gets into the Sioux Court site and goes down into the Split Rock Creek Aquifer, basically from north to south. The Split Rock Creek Valley is, or the Brandon embayment goes east to west, from, basically from Sioux Falls into Minnesota. And the flow north to south through that, generally, it's either the water in the Split Rock Creek Aquifer is either captured by wells or goes to this Big Sioux River, or just continues south back out the other side of the embayment into the Sioux Court site. The aquifer is confined, meaning in most cases, the head is, or everywhere, the head in the aquifer is above that shale layer. So it's, it's full, essentially is what I'm saying. So here's the model domain area. It's a modflow model. I don't know how much you guys know about USGS computer simulations, but it's a modflow NWT formulation. The orange outline on that is the, is the outline of the majority of the Split Rock Creek Aquifer. As I said, it goes into Minnesota, and there's two offshoots that go off to the west that are probably not very well, if at all, connected to the main body of the aquifer. And are unlikely to be feeding much in. The blue area is a kind of a catch-all for the superficial aquifers, the one associated with the Big Sioux River, along the river. So the big, that's called the Big Sioux South Aquifer, and then there's ones associated with Split Rock Creek, Beaver Creek and other area. And I was going to be able to have a pointer, but I wanted to point out in particular the area where the river flows essentially east, the Big Sioux River. So the top of the bend in the river. Under there, there's an area that we call the window. And that's an area where that shale is fairly thin between the superficial aquifers and the deeper aquifer. And that's, that's an important point for later on when I'm talking here. So the model was built, as I said, using NWT, the steady-state model, which we started with, was used to model conditions with, was used to model conditions from two thousand to two thousand and ten. We looked at all the data, and there was an area from two thousand to two thousand and ten where river stage, rainfall, pumping, everything was fairly consistent through that time period, so that we chose that period to model. And the model calibrated well. This is actually the plot of heads for that calibration, and it's less than ten percent error is what we were looking for. But it's a non-unique solution. And what I mean by that is that you could have two parameters, say, for example, hydraulic conductivity and recharge, and if you lower hydraulic conductivity and you lower recharge, you would end up with the same answer. So it's, you want to reduce the uncertainty, so in this case, we decided we have a bunch of long-term data available, so let's try a transient model. In this case, it's a four-layer model. First layer, as I said, is superficial aquifer and till, and then there's, it gets on layer three represents the SRC aquifer, and then there's underlying court site. So here's the heads, the simulated versus interpolated, and you can't really see it that well, I'm that small. Pink is the interpolated heads, the blue is the simulated heads, and as you can see, flow is generally from north to south, and then it focuses in towards the Big Sioux River and the Brandon wells. In this case, right now, as I'm saying, as we're, as conditions are now, the river is in certain areas above the level of the SRC aquifer and in other areas below it. So there are areas where the SRC aquifer is actually discharging water to the river, and there are areas where it is probably gaining water from the river. So that is an additional, so besides just getting water from the Sioux Court site, it's also getting water from the river. But here's that long-term data we were, I was talking about. We call this, Mitch and I called this the interesting graph, because there's just a lot of stuff on here that's kind of interesting. I don't know how interesting it is to you guys, but these are the, in D E N R, observation wells that are throughout the Split Rock Creek aquifer. And then you can see a dark red line right kind of through the middle of the data. That is the elevation of the Big Sioux River during that time, and then the little red line on the bottom shows annual precipitation rates throughout that time. So that's nineteen eighty to two thousand and twenty. And I want to point out, if you look at the heads in the curves before nineteen ninety, they're all above the level of the river, meaning the aquifer was completely above the level of the river, so water would discharge to the river or just continue south into the Sioux Court site and keep going. But after nineteen ninety, you start to see wells where the heads are below the level of the river, which means that it could be inducing recharge from the river as well. The two lowest curves are the two wells that are closest to the Brandon city wells. The two blue ones on top are the two farthest north wells that are in that aquifer. So what we wanted to do with this data is basically create a model and calibrate it such that during the time, so we started nineteen eighty-one to two thousand and nineteen, and we went on annual time steps, so you have recharge, river stage, and pumping levels all modified to, as well as we could, match actual data and see if we could match the curves. Because then, as I mentioned earlier, the, where you could have recharge and hydraulic conductivity and have different values, if you have, if you're changing things, and so it has to respond properly, then it very much reduces your uncertainty. And in this case, here's four of our calibration plots for that transient model. The top two, eighty-seven H and eighty-seven I are the two wells closest to the Brandon city wells. Eighty-seven G is a well between Brandon and Valley Springs, and eighty-seven D is a well over by the XL Energy Power Plant. As you can see, they all match, well, for a transient model, they match really well. The orange data is the actual measured data, and you can see there's a lot of noise in that data, and that's basically because it's pumping hard in the summer, not pumping so much in the winter, there's spring recharge or spring rainfall, that kind of thing, the floods and things like that, whereas the modeled values are annual averages. And the earliest times are where our biggest error is, and that's primarily because we just really did not have a very good idea of what the pumping was. There just aren't records for pumping back prior to, well, we started losing data probably prior to two thousand. So what we're trying to go for, now that we have this model that seems to match what we wanted to do, we have good confidence that going forward and making predictions, the predictive values that the model gives will be accurate. So for the sustainability assessment, now that we have a steady-state model that was good, and we increase our confidence in the model with the transient calibration, and the model is reasonably reproducing that data over the last eighteen years, we're feeling pretty good about going forward. So what we did was, we took that original steady-state model, because the heads were fairly close to that period at the beginning of the time, and then started increasing, so we used this, an average head for the river and an average recharge value, which would be from precipitation, and then steadily increased the pumping rate from the city wells to match increasing demands from the city. And as you can see, as the increasing demands are, it continues to drop, heads continue to decrease in the aquifer. After doing that, we did an uncertainty analysis, and I'll get to that in just a second, and then we identified some data gaps that I'll give some suggestions on in a few minutes. Here's that data again, another bigger version of that graph. So as you can see, particularly, I have the thing again, the, all the graphs generally, you can see that they are mirroring the actual data. So like, particularly with the pink one, the heads are dropping throughout the time of the actual data, and then where the straight line is, that's the stimulated data, and it just continues down on the same curve. These are all steady-state models, so each one of these through time would be essentially a worst-case scenario for that specific time period. So in two thousand and forty, say, for example, after two thousand and forty, the demand did not increase at all. All those lines would just go straight across. They would, the aquifer would not continue to decline. These are, these are what the heads would be on a consistent basis for that particular demand. And the bottom on that, I believe, is twelve hundred and twenty feet above sea level. The bottom or the top of the aquifer is at eleven, excuse me, is at eleven hundred and seventy feet. So even at the two thousand and seventy demand, there's still, the aquifer is still confined, and it's still confined throughout the entire domain in the model. So assuming that the conditions don't change, there's no drought, a factory doesn't come in and start pumping a lot more water, there should be, the aquifer would still be healthy at that time. Here's how the heads would look, the groundwater table for that aquifer would look at that time. Now it's, now there's no water discharging to the river anymore. It's probably inducing, as you can see in that gray area, so that's that area I was talking about, the window earlier. There's recharge occurring from the Big Sioux River down into the aquifer at that point, so that's mitigating the effect of the rivers there. As you go to the east, however, there's no river over there to help recharge, and it's a deeper, the aquifer is deeper itself, so there's more cutoff from any kind of precipitation or superficial aquifer. So the effect there is larger, and I'll get back to that in just a second. Let's go to the next one. Here's the drawdown map, and I think you can maybe make it out there that at the two well areas, well, seven, and then the six-eight area, at the end of the two thousand and seventy demand model, the drawdown was thirty, about thirty-eight feet. So there will be significant drawdown of the aquifer. But again, if the demand levels off at that, it's, it won't go any further than that. It's not, you're not mining the aquifer. It won't go dry. It should just continue. As you keep lowering the head, it just keeps drawing more water in, either from the river or from the Sioux Court site. So then, we wanted to take a look at, well, what if some of our model assumptions, or actually, I'll get to that in a second, but do a water budget analysis. Modflow does an analysis for all the cells in the model. Where's the water coming from? Where's it going to? Totals it up, make sure that everything adds up to zero. So the blue line there is the increase in pumping from the city of Brandon. The gray line at the top is how much water is getting to the river, and the bottom orange line is how much water is coming from the Sioux Court site. And so this was, well, this one was a little surprising, was that the majority of the water that would be going to the city wells to make up for the increases in demand would be water that's actually either being intercepted, water that is currently being discharged to the Big Sioux River, or induced new recharge from the Big Sioux River, and only a small portion of it would be water that's increased demand from the Big Sioux, or from the Sioux Court site. So again, like I said, we were looking at, so what if some of our values were uncertain? And this is for, we took four parameters that would be the most impactful on the heads in the aquifer, and that was the boundary condition around the outside, so the head condition in the Sioux Court site, the conductivity of the Sioux Court site itself, the vertical conductivity of that confining shale layer, and the vertical conductivity of the window. And as you can see, as you move the head condition further away, that's the one in the top left, that the heads in the aquifer would drop precipitously in the beginning, about fifteen feet, but as it gets further away, it has less and less effect. The rest of them, you can kind of see that they have similar effect over time, but I wanted to point out that in all these cases, for example, if the Sioux, the conductivity of the Sioux Court site was actually that much lower than it was modeled as in the, in the calibrated model, the model would have to be completely recalibrated, because there were just, it wouldn't work. It would say that there's just not enough water, and we know there is, so it just, it wouldn't matter. But in all of these cases, even with the, those ones up in the upper right there and upper left, it's still confined. So even under these cases, which would not, aren't even realistic, there's still, the aquifer is confined. So we're still pretty confident that it will remain confined throughout the time of the fifty-year that we were looking at. So in the summary here, we did a conceptual model. We built the transient and steady-state models. The calibrated head, or calibrated model suggests that at two thousand and seventy demand, that would result in about a forty-foot drawdown at the city wells, but that that's, that level is still about forty feet above the top of the aquifer, so it would remain confined. And the uncertainty analysis indicated that it's, that even if we're wrong on some of our assumptions, that it would, that we still have confidence that it would be above the top of the aquifer. But we do have some recommendations. One would be, consider identifying or find wells that already exist, or install observation wells in the Sioux Court site, particularly north of the city, but as time goes on in other areas, because as I, as you could see, as the heads get drawn further and further down in this Split Rock Creek aquifer, flow becomes more radial as opposed to just coming down and in. So even to the south, you might need to know what's going on, and that's where a lot of the water is coming from. So you really want to know what the, what's going on there, and even if there's any issues with that water. We would suggest that the city continue to monitor the DE and our observation well data to see if, if the increases in pumping result in the same, or the expected decreases in aquifer head. It could be that there is something that's, we don't know, that is out there, that, an area that we think currently is aquifer, but it's actually court site, and so there's a lot less water there than we know about. So these things could crop up over time, and you would be able to see it in the data. I would even look at, look at conducting a test in that area of the window to see how good of a connection there is between the superficial aquifers and the deeper aquifer to see how much water can be driven into the SRC aquifer from the river to reduce draw on the Sioux Court site, and it would also reduce the impact that the city pumping has. Because it's a confined aquifer, the impact from the city wells reaches way out into this aquifer, as opposed to an unconfined aquifer where the heads, head drawdowns would be much more localized. So it could potentially affect, say, Valley Springs. So you'd want to keep an eye on that. If additional wells are needed in the future, that window area would be a good place to look to put wells, or possibly look at, XL Energy has two wells over by their facility and maybe use one of theirs. If the documentation is correct in the well database, the city of Sioux Falls former well number sixty-seven, which is west of XL Energy, they don't use it anymore, and it's still, it's still there, so there's, right next to the river, so that would be a potential option. And then for, for the future, if there, if there are significant changes, say, a new industry comes in and puts in a well and starts pumping a lot of water, or say, some communities further north start pumping more water out of the Sioux Court site and change the head situation there, and reduce aquifer flow into the north side of the Split Rock Creek, then we'd have to update the model and change the boundary conditions and see if everything still holds. So, questions?
I guess that brought up one question for me.
Sure.
There's a proposed sand and gravel pit west of town here always, you know, where we're talking at?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. They'll be a large water user. You haven't modeled anything with that?
No.
Do we know what their water needs will be? Tammy, have you heard anything, saying anything?
I don't.
And it would also depend on which aquifer. If you're using the superficial aquifer, the Big Sioux South aquifer, then they're split, so it would have less effect.
But that's something I think that we'll want to, we want to know and keep track of, what their needs will be. As you mentioned, you know, a large user, I can't think of a larger user than somebody like that.
You used the phrase drawdown a couple times. Am I understanding correctly that is going to be referencing us having to take our wells or our, we're going to have to go lower with our wells to extract the water?
No, it's the, the level of the water in the well will be lower.
Okay.
So that you're still in the same aquifer, but, I mean, it depends on where the, where the pumps are. You might have to lower your pumps.
Okay.
I, I don't remember exactly where the pumps are set in the wells, but...
So how does, how does radium factor into that? Because is, aren't there like sweet spots within the wells, the deeper you go, there become more issues, or is that not necessarily the case?
That's, that's not necessarily the case, and it's kind of well-specific, where they, where the wells are and what, what they're tapping. But yeah, there, and even within the Split Rock Creek aquifer, there's like two or three different layers, and there may be different levels of radium in each of the different layers. But I think the wells are open to all three of them anyways. So it's all mixing.
So it could just be matter of finding the same sweet spot lower?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So for 2070, do you know what the population estimate was for 2070?
That would be, US would know that, but I don't know exactly what it is. It's about...
Right at twenty-three thousand.
Yeah, the pumping was a little over twice what they're pumping now. Anything else? All right. No other questions?
Hi, my name is Ben Jolson. I'm with AE2S. We're working with Tammy and city staff, largely Raleigh and Donovan, on the completion of the facility plan for the expansion of the city's water treatment plant. Overall, in the facility plan, objectives are, we're looking at the city's current and future water demands or projections of water demands based on population growth, and then complete analysis of the existing treatment facility and building, and then looking forward towards development of the treatment alternatives for the water treatment plant expansion. Getting a little more detail covered real quick here, but the base of planning covered the water demands or what are projected needs over a twenty-five and fifty-year period. Over that period, with the water quality objectives, we're looking at, of course, meeting all of the Safe Drinking Water Act requirements, achieving iron and manganese removal, which is already done with the city's water treatment plant, and then potentially looking at softening with a couple of the alternatives. With the facility plan, those alternatives, we developed, of course, meeting the water quality and quantity goals and needs for the city, looking at different treatment possibilities, and then handling of residuals from any of the alternatives. Residuals meaning any of the waste streams from the treatment processes. And then rounding it out, in the end, we'll be completing an implementation plan, how improvements will be phased in the future, and rate impacts on the plan, the approach moving forward. Getting into the water demand projections, just a quick graph here, the blue line on the bottom is the projected average day demand. This started at the beginning, the blue line there, 2018, going out through 2070. And then the orange line is the maximum projected day demand, so that'd be your peak day, normally your hot days in the summer. And then the black line, horizontal line across the middle there, is your current treatment plant capacity. Looking forward then, current population, this was shown in 2018, it was ten thousand, obviously a little more than that now. Twenty-forty-five is projected to be about sixteen thousand eight hundred, and in 2070 projected to be about twenty-four thousand seven hundred, so that's to answer your question there. Using similar per capita day demand, or gallons per capita, per day usage, we'll put it that way, going forward in the twenty-five and fifty-year timeframes, frames, we assumed water usage got a little bit more efficient, as history seems to show it is doing. Using that per person demand, projecting forward, looking at 2045, a average day demand of about 1.6 million gallons, sorry, that's compared to a, a current demand of about one million gallons a day on average. And then 2070, looking at average day demand of about 2.2 million. Peak day then, going out to that fifty-year timeframe, is about five and a half million gallons. So looking at the existing plant and the cost effectiveness of a expansion at this point, and what the site can handle down the road, a 1,000 gallon per minute expansion would get the city out to a twenty-five-year timeframe, but the restricted site can likely only handle about one more expansion. A future expansion would be really tricky. It's kind of bound in there between park area and the railroad. And in, in the effort to look at cost effectiveness of expansion, a 2,000 GPM expansion now is a lot more cost effective than a 1,000 GPM expansion now and a similar expansion twenty-five years down the road. The 2,000 gallon per minute expansion is what we're targeting for the design expansion that does double the plant capacity to a total of 4,000 GPM at that point. And getting into the treatment objectives, like I said, we're going to, as every plant meets the Safe Drinking Water Act requirements, remove concentrations of radionuclides to the lowest level, level achievable with available treatment technologies, also remove iron and manganese to levels at or below secondary maximum containment limits, which, like I said, the plant currently does. And then also with a couple of the alternatives, look at removing hardness down to 200 milligrams per liter, which is removing about half the hardness, in essence, softening the water. Here we get into the alternatives. We're looking at four alternatives within the, in the facility plan. Split them into two groups, non-softening and softening. Alternative one, we'll be real brief here, and I get into layouts and, and things in the next slides, but alternative one is basically matching the existing treatment plant. We take that same, or those same treatment processes, double the capacity, and that's our alternative one. Alternative two is real similar to alternative one. At the plant, it would be the same, double the treatment capacity with the same treatment technologies, but we'd also have a targeted radium removal system at well seven. It's known as a WRT process. It's a media absorption treatment system that would reduce the radionuclide concentration at well seven before that water's blended back in with the rest of the well water it brought to the plant. Alternatives three and four get into softening. So alternative three includes an RO process, a reverse osmosis process. Front part of the plant would still be mirroring the existing treatment processes, we just add a reverse osmosis process on the tail end of that plant. Only half the water would need to go through that RO system to achieve that softening goal. And then alternative four is lime softening. When I get into the schematics, I can show a little better how that fits in the process, but that lime softening is a treatment process that's put in front of the filters, and then water's filtered and then finished out in the clear well. Here we get into treatment schematics that are used for alternative one and two. Like I said, processes are real similar, matching the current treatment plant. Well water comes into the plant, runs through the aerator and detention tank for iron and manganese removal, then is filtered, disinfected, and is sent to the clear well where it's pumped to the distribution system. Under both these scenarios, we still have a residual stream, which is the backwash reclaim water. Those filters, after they run for a period of time, have to be backwashed. That water's sent to a reclaim tank. Water's reclaimed off the top of that, but currently the small amount of waste or settlement that comes out of that reclaim water is sent to the sewer. And all of the facility plan alternatives, we're looking at eliminating that water going to sewer, being able to reclaim a majority of that water, and then de-water any residuals so they can be handled in another manner rather than sewer, like, larger to the landfill. In both these, alternatives one and two, the plan would be using a simple dewatering process, something like a sediment filter bag because of the low amount of solids with these alternatives. Essentially, backwash reclaim water, what's not reclaimed into the treatment process and basically recirculated and saved there, gets sent through this filter bag that accumulates solids in there. Once full, that can be disconnected and let it basically drain and de-water further, and that can be sent to the landfill. With the amount of solids with these alternatives, it's a very manageable size. We're looking at something that's a four-by-four square that could fit on a pallet, likely go to the landfill just in a city-sized dumpster. And then on alternative two, like I mentioned, they have that WRT process. That has a media that gets consumed, or the capacity that media gets consumed, so that will need replacement, replacement on roughly an annual basis. That depends largely on how much water's going through that system and the radionuclide concentrations. But that is a, a expended media that has to be handled and disposed of as well. Just a quick overview on that alternative one, alternatives one and two. On the left, we've got an aerial view. On the right, we've got a floor plan layout. So to give you a point of reference, on the left there, north is up. On the right, north is actually to the right. That is just so they fit better on the page here, we could make them as big as possible. The colors on the aerial view on the left, the gray is the existing plant building area, so it's a water plant in the clear well. The red areas would be the new building areas. On the right-hand side, the large part of the expansion is that south arm, or the bottom arm there, that actually is on the east side of the plant. It's mirroring the same detention basin and filters as the existing plant. We are showing a new chlorine room in there for disinfection area, residuals handling room, and then some building space for mechanical and electrical equipment. One thing we also have on here that's up on the west side of the clear well, between the clear well and the road, is a new high-service pump station. In the existing building evaluation, looking at the high-service pumps down in the basement right now, it's not a real easy area to expand the capacity there. Piping would have to all be increased, and that piping goes in through the wall through the clear well as well as out the wall to the distribution system. Not saying that can't be done, but that would interrupt service for a period of time all that's being done. So one option we looked at was actually a new increased-capacity high-service pump station on the west side of the clear well that could be constructed initially, and then switched over to being the high-service pump station. Those existing high-service pumps wouldn't go unused. Right now, they're a dual-purpose pump. They're high-service pumps and backwash pumps. They are, act as the same processes there. They would then be disdedicated as backwash pumps. And those are, that's similar across all four alternatives we looked at. Alternative three is our first softening alternative, includes reverse osmosis. Front part of the plant would look very similar to the existing plant. We have aeration, detention basin, and filters, and then we would add that RO process after the filters. Let me get into the layout quick here. How that RO area would lay out is it would be right north of the expansion on the east side of the clear well. In that location, we can intercept the pipe coming from the filters to the clear well and would essentially pull off the water. We would need to, to put through the RO process, soften the water to meet that hardness goal, and then put it, blend it back in with the rest of the process stream. On the residual side here, we'd still have the backwash reclaim that would need to be handled, and then also with the reverse osmosis process, there is a concentrate stream that needs to be handled in discussions with the state. That would need to go through a permitting process, of course, to be able to discharge back to the Big Sioux River. But passing on to them, the flow rates and the concentrations, doesn't look like there'd be any issue in obtaining that permit, that permit, excuse me, with, of course, the regulations of the stream guidelines that they have in place for that section of stream. Then on to alternative four, is our lime softening alternative. In the front of this one, the change to the kind of process schematic is we don't need that detention basin up front. The contact clarifier that is your lime softening basin acts as the detention basin as well. So we still have aeration up front, and then followed that by that lime softening process. After lime softening, we recarbonate the water, add CO2, that brings the pH back down after the lime softening process. Then it goes on to the filters, which is your, your last step at that point before going to the clear well and to the distribution system. This one does have a larger amount of solids that need to be handled with that lime softening process. There's lime sludge that needs to get de-watered and sent to the landfill or ponds. Initially, you know, we're not looking at a huge amount of lime sludge created from the plant capacity, or from the average day demand, I should say, but looking out fifty years, you know, it just keeps growing on the, the amount that, that needs to be handled. What we looked at in the facility plan is just mechanical dewatering from a cost estimating standpoint. That would be de-watered, reclaim all that water back to limit that amount of water loss in there, and then that lime sludge would be disposed of at the landfill. Layout of alternative four, this is the alternative that takes up the most amount of space. With that right-of-way or the, the boundary we need for the railroad tracks, this one likely will encroach into the softball field there, looking at the preliminary layouts now anyway. So that's, that's the largest space take-up right there. Getting into costs, what we've done is done a cost estimation on the building size, all the equipment, and used multipliers based on similar projects for mechanical and electrical work, and then done some sanity checks on those. So these are preliminary costs here, still will be reviewed one more time here before we finalize the facility plan. But essentially, what we're looking at with alternative one, being that matching of the existing plant treatment, about sixteen million dollar project, so I look it back up, this is broken into three parts here. The water plant itself, we have as a top-line item there. Then we looked at well improvements. Those well improvements would include piping well three to the water plant to be treated with the rest of the water, and an additional well needed in the future. And then those high-service, the high-service pump station improvements, we kept that as a line item on its own, just to separate that from the water plant expansion there. Total project costs, alternative one with the existing treatment, mirror, sixty million dollar project. Alternative two, adding in that WRT process at well seven, that, that adds in a decent-sized building out there, about twenty, a little over twenty million dollar project. Alternative three with the RO softening, about twenty-five and a half million, and alternative four with the lime softening, about twenty-seven and a half million. Then we also looked at O&amp;M costs and lifecycle costs. On the operation and maintenance side, we included part of the current city operating budget, and then evaluated the energy costs, chemical costs, and maintenance costs, which includes estimated maintenance on the new equipment going in, as well as replacement costs over the twenty-year timeframe. So it's a percentage basis at that point. Looking at those, the existing treatment is the lowest-cost option. Alternative two, actually, with the WRT process, is the highest-cost option because that system has a, the way they lay out, a service contract for the replacement there. So the water getting treated through that WRT process is fairly expensive. And then actually, on the lime softening and RO side, they're really similar, similar in the annual O&amp;M costs. Then going out for a twenty-year timeframe, looking at lifecycle costs, this just helps kind of compare apples to apples over twenty years. Say if a, if a project is cheaper to build, but it's more expensive to operate, this helps bring it back to a more even playing field on how you're looking at them. Alternative one is still the lowest cost on that option, and alternatives three and four with the lime softening are a more expensive option in, in that aspect of things, but that, those are adding that extra treatment where you're softening the water, where alternatives one and two are not doing that. Getting in the next steps, of course, we want to finalize the facility plan here, and moving forward with a alternative, a selected alternative, we'd have an implementation plan developed, and then complete the necessary environmental reviews that the state requires for the facility plan. We have the opportunity to, opportunity going forward to include some public engagement, and that is from a public... and that is from a public education standpoint. Inform the public of what they can see with what the water utility is doing, if there's additional treatment processes added, we can bring some education into that on what those treatment processes do. Piloting may be necessary, mainly if we're looking at going with reverse osmosis. It's always good to run a quick pilot, not quick in every sense, but run a pilot just to verify design parameters and then move into final design and construction. And then just a last note on the public engagement piece, some of the options we have are getting into fact sheets, social media posts, we can do some videos, and however variety we want to bring that education out there. With that, any questions? Apologize if I got a little long-winded.
So I'm assuming that at some point we're going to see the difference in the rate structure for the different alternatives?
Our plan is to do a rate impacts for just the selected alternative.
So with the reverse osmosis, how does that affect that graph that shows the supply need? Because there's a waste with RO of what, like 25% or somewhere in there, or what's the?
Right now, we're assuming 25% of the water going through the RO. So we're planning on 50% of the water running through the RO process, so if you're looking at the plant as a whole, it's about 12.5% of the water.
Okay. Is that factored in at all when we're looking at supply and demand? I mean, it's going to change things, isn't it, or did that already get?
Yep. That looking, that's from a raw water demand standpoint, that would be what we consider our worst-case scenario, which is our highest raw water demand. That's what was used for our projected planning. And that's what was, that's what was shared with WSP for their, some of their analysis as well.
Okay. And the memory refresher on the WRT, that's a third-party vendor that takes care of the ?
Yep. That's just the equipment supplier, yep.
And that second option. And then well seven, refresh my memory, which aquifer does that come out of?
That comes from the Split Rock Creek aquifer.
That is the Split Rock also.
Yep.
Well, I understand the doing just the rate change on the alternative we pick. However, I'm not sure that that's going to give me enough information to determine, is it worth doing the softening? Because our residents have asked for years for us to soften the water, but we know that the rate increase is going to be more, and how are we going to weigh, is that worth it or not? I guess, I don't know, maybe the council knows.
Yeah, we can fairly easily show rate impacts across all four alternatives as well. That does help provide a better picture of it.
Yeah, either you or we can run those projections as well. And we can, we'll run through some items at CIP too, but most likely it's going to be a surcharge for any alternatives we do on the water treatment plant.
What is the difference, Christina?
Surcharge is a separate line item on the utility bill. It's not figured into the rate analysis, and the main reason on the surcharge is it doesn't go against our debt capacity, which a $16 or $25 million plan is going to draw our capacity way up and, or draw our capacity down, which would not allow us for other projects to get done.
But everybody, I mean, you can't pick and choose. You're either going to have it softened or you're not, and you're going to, I mean, I mean, everybody would have the surcharge.
Yes.
I think that would be helpful for me.
Your numbers showing the operation-maintenance costs of, looks like 20 million for 20-year million dollars a year. What do we currently spend on O&amp;M?
Oh, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
I would ask that you get those.
Yep.
Number two, I think the presentation of that material, when you're showing 20 years where the O&amp;M costs into the total construction, I mean, it's showing up like it's part of the total construction passage is kind of deceiving. I don't like the presentation of that where you're showing 20 years of O&amp;M costs in there.
Yep.
It would behoove you and everybody else to show it on a yearly basis, I think.
It does, it'd make the number a lot bigger, but that's to help show if, you know, it's over a 20-year life cycle. It helps break it up if one option's cheaper to operate, it helps compare that apples to apples.
The numbers are relatively the same.
Yeah.
So it's a moot point, really, was my analysis of that. Well number seven, you had, you know, alternate number two, what's the deal with well number seven? Is that high in radium? Is that?
Yeah, well seven is the highest in the radium concentration right now, so that well is not being pumped to the plant right now. So then that, that specific treatment would just eliminate that water from being blended with the, in alternative two, blended with the rest of the well water stream and raising that radium concentration. So it's considered a point-specific treatment.
I'm not a water engineer, but wouldn't it be behoove us or better spent that we eliminate that option and just put our money better spent in a, I don't know, finding a different well or something that isn't high in radium? It just seems like a, pardon the slang, a dumb alternative to me.
But it doesn't mean that water's not usable. That alternative two is just...
But you're opening yourself up to a can of worms, and I don't think I want to go down that road. If you're blending and you're pumping money in to take the radium out, I think there's a perception that our money could be better spent going somewhere else. Get a different well, spend the $2 million bucks that...
But Raleigh, they did some analysis on that well just recently and were able to get rid of that radium without doing that.
And all four of the options do consider still using well seven. Alternative two just considered specific treatment at the well seven site. So alternatives one, three, and four, we're still bringing well seven.
Oh, so you have utilized well seven in every scenario.
Yep.
He didn't really clarify, the WRT system is specific to that point of that well. It's not going to treat the water every well, it's just going to treat well seven. The reverse osmosis and lime softening will actually remove that radium, so you don't need that WRT system. But as Barb stated, with the tests that we've, the preliminary tests that we did, we were showing a good radium removal at well seven with the samples that we took and just using the HMO process that we use now. So it did the job, and it actually, I think, showed better results than the lime softening did even, so.
Thank you for clarifying that. Like I said, I'm not a water engineer.
Sorry if I didn't make that clear.
Mr. Oswald, could I have you come back up? You got a little excited on me and jumped up to the podium here. I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Wasn't going to let you off the hook that easy for 70 grand or whatever we paid you for this. You need to summarize for me your report, and if I can read into your report. The aquifer is recharging, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And it appears that it's adequate to meet the needs of the city of Brandon to our projections at 2050 or 2070.
Yes.
With certainty.
Yes. As much certainty as we can have.
As much certainty as you can put into the calculation.
With the data that we've got, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Quick add-on question, did any of your modeling factor in a potential reverse osmosis waste of 25%?
Yes, they gave us that number. The number, their number that they gave us was the maximum, including it, yep.
Okay, thank you.
So this, the doubling of the plant would take us for 20 years?
Nope, it'd get you out through that 2070 timeframe.
Oh, to 2070, okay, all right.
Can I get the council to advance?
Got to keep hopes high. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I presume we're going to talk about this on our CIP? Okay.
So we can move on, is my point? Let's move on, Mayor.
Okay. We have the second reading of ordinance 613, the 2021 budget ordinance. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the second reading of ordinance 613, which is the 2021 budget ordinance. Any comments, questions? Hearing none? All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the golf course, the Landscapes Unlimited report was handed out tonight, is that correct?
Yep, I handed out a hard copy. Representative from Landscapes Unlimited can't make it tonight, but they will be here at the next council meeting, October 5th, to go over the report with you. Included with the report, they sent a couple of articles related to golf course management, just their thoughts and ideas on, if you want to go down that road. But please review the report. If you have any questions, let me know or let Andrew know, and then we can ship those questions down to Landscapes Unlimited so they can address those questions during their presentation.
Okay, very good. We also have a pay app number two for the golf course flood repairs in the amount of $44,288 to Landscapes Unlimited. Could I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to second to approve pay app number two is presented for $44,288. Any questions? All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under the Parks and Rec, we have pay app number two for the pool project in the amount of $117,229 to Beckenholfer, is that correct?
Second.
Motion to second to approve pay app number two in the amount of $117,229. Any questions? All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also under Parks and Rec, we have pool improvement project change order number two, which adds $26,829 to the project. Have a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion to second to approve change order number two as presented. Any questions?
I have one. So this was one that wasn't properly located, is that right?
Yeah, the second item number two, the water main relocation. We, it was not correctly marked on the plans.
Okay, so we're fixing all that, right, Raleigh, and making sure we, because that's kind of a big mistake we have there. Okay.
All in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Administration, we have a concept plan for the I-90, proposed I-90 Plaza development, and also along with that, we have a memorandum of understanding with that. Ryan, do you want to?
Yeah, Mr. Verrick and Mr. Schwebach are here representing the development group if they can come up and present the plan. If you have any questions.
My name is Pat Schwebach, civil engineer at JSA Engineers.
Daryl Verrick, I'm the developer, representing the owners. How you doing?
Good.
Good.
Any questions from the council on the concept plan? It was in your packet. Kind of, anything you want to briefly go over on the plan or?
Sure. Do you guys have the preliminary?
Yep, they have it in their packet.
Plan, okay, because that's being redrawn again, but...
Okay.
And it's improved, believe me, it's going to improve a lot. So yeah, there's 50 acres here. We're moving 430,000 cubic yards of sand and gravel from the east end to the west end. It'll all be compacted fill, engineered fills, so anybody coming in there to build, their soil conditions will be perfect right out of the chute. And we've gone through the federal regulations on this deal for getting this done, the flood plane, all those issues have been addressed. It's all approved on the FEMA, the CLOMAR, I'll let him address that. And we've got a lot of activity there, there's no doubt in my mind that this thing's going to fill up fast.
I have a question, quick. So is it, I'm looking at this, is it similar to like, kind of like Lake Lorraine, like where you had, like you're going to put a lake at one end and then like commercial?
Well, you've probably done old enough to remember, but at 26th and Marion Road, where Hy-Vee is and Sioux Falls Ford and Lowe's, that was a big hole in the ground that hit all the downtown rubble in there from the urban renewal. And I took all that out of there and put 450,000 yards in that hole, engineered fill where Hy-Vee and Sioux Falls Ford and Lowe's are right now. And this is about the same type of deal. And Lake Lorraine, that's all sand and gravel there, we're all sand and gravel here.
Okay.
So the building conditions are perfect.
So how, so you get in and off right there, like by the gas station or is it before? Like where's the entrance?
Ash, what are you talking, I'm not questioning.
The entrance?
Yeah, Ash, right across from Ash, the gas station.
Okay.
And I think we called it Ash Court or something like that, instead of changing the name and confusing people coming off the interstate or anybody else, you know. Yeah, we plan on doing smaller convention facilities there, not sure exactly the size yet to be determined from the feasibility study, but we do have interest in two mid-to-upper level hotels on there, plus numerous other users, fast food, steakhouse, movie theaters are kind of up in the air right now with the movie deal the way it is, but yeah, we have quite a bit of this land lined up for users already.
So that water is there naturally?
Yeah, that will be just ground table water, because bedrock's down 20 feet and we're going down 18 feet, so we'll have a sand bottom on the lake, and it'll just fluctuate with whatever the water table is out there.
And then you also pointed out, I see a bike path or a bow?